I want all, but I want this summer. If there's a whole lunch.
So we can revisit this again last fall.
Absolutely. Can't revisit it again.
I'm asking.
We'll call the common council back to order. I'll ask our clerk to call the roll again to make sure we still have a quorum.
Alderperson Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Chaplaski.
Here.
Nine present, one excused.
We have a quorum. We will start with the administration and finance committee.
Mayor Devine. I had the pleasure of substituting today for Alderman Vitale, who was unable to be present. I draw your attention to items, all items before administration of finance on our agenda were passed unanimously in the affirmative. Item eight, an ordinance, was passed. Items nine, 10 were adopted. 11 was placed on file. 12, 13 were adopted. 14, 15, 16, and 17, and 18 were approved and placed on file, as was 19. Approved and placed on file. Mr. Mayor, that's my motion. That's the report of the administration of finance committee.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Ranky. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chaplaski.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the public works committee. Alderman Barzak.
Mayor Devine. I would like to bring your attention to items number 20 through 27, with the exception of item 23. These are resolutions and ordinances that were in front of the committee. The ordinances were adopted. The number 25 was a resolution passed, and 27, a resolution to be placed on file. These were all approved by all five members of the committee, and I move for adoption of the committee's report.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Roth.
Twenty-one was amended, right?
Yes.
Twenty-one would be as amended, correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman May.
What was the amendment?
From $25,000 to $5,000.
Any other discussion? Did we have a second?
We did.
Second. No.
Second by Alderman Ranky, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chaplaski.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Motion carries.
Then we have item number 23, which is on tonight's agenda, and it's been approved by all five members of the committee to place on file. However, with number 23 came a recommendation through the committee that staff had recommended that it would be a $5 million umbrella policy for the pedlets, and that is the recommendation that came out of the committee. What's open for discussion right now is, it's still up in the air whether it should be $2 million, whether it should be $5 million. There's still some people that are firmly in favor of the five, and there's some that want to do the two. So right now what is open for debate is which direction to authorize staff to move in as to whether to go with the $5 million umbrella or a $2 million umbrella. And I'm going to call on Scott Post if I would, and he will explain this a little clearer.
I don't really have anything to add to the discussion we had unless anybody has questions, but my point was that for item 24, I believe it was, the pedlet that was actually approved, where this comes into play is that one was approved with the $5 million umbrella policy, and so the discussion would actually affect that agenda item. If the council vote is different, the requirements would be different.
For item number 24.
I think most of the Aldermen were in the room and heard the discussion that went on. And, you know, right now there's only one side. Basically, what we have is my recommendation of the $1 million, $2 million with a $5 million umbrella that the city engineer has joined in. We think the pedlets, particularly on Greenfield Avenue, where they seem to be congregating, is a very risky thing, and that is a good risk management thing for the city to do. There are also very excellent arguments that were put forward by John Steeble in his email to you, and the mayor has spent them on why we want these, and if we want these, they need to be more affordable. And with these prices, it's about, I think, $2,000 to $2,100 for the extra umbrella policy at $5 million. It would be about $1,000 at $2 million. And so it's a policy decision from a risk management standpoint of what risk do you want to assign to the business owner who is getting this? What risk do you want the city to take to get these things if you want them? And so that's essentially the decision that you have to make as an Alderperson. That, I think, is a fairly short and succinct.
Yep, and Scott, just to clarify, the recommendation from staff, from the attorney's office, and the recommendation from the city engineer's office was they felt that the $5 million says warranted.
Correct, yeah. And that stems from about a year, year and a half ago, we had CivMCC, Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, who is our insurer and our risk manager, and they have a risk management firm. They evaluated all of our insurance policies, procedures, and standards that we have. They approved all that we had or recommended increases for some of our insurance levels and recommended some other changes on how we handle our risk management. We adopted all those. The $1 million, $2 million, and $5 million is what they have for all of our standard contractors, you know, anybody digging in the street or laying roadway or any kind of thing like that. That's a standard recommendation. And so based on that, the city engineer, I believe, or of the opinion that the pedlets, particularly out in Greenfield Avenue, certainly not so much on some side street, present a greater risk to the city from a risk management standpoint of either the city being liable on certain things or CivMCC being liable as the insurer above that on certain things. And that's the reason for our recommendation. And then, you know, and anything less than that is obviously more affordable and gets the pedlets in there because the bid and the two owners that were there tonight made the representation that at $2,100 or $2,000 for their policy that they'd been quoted, they can't afford to do this, and so you basically wouldn't have any of these pedlets. So that's the decision, the policy decision that you've got to make.
I believe their quote was that they would not be able to reap the return of the $2,100 or $2,500 bucks. They would not be able to sell enough, and I will use the word tacos and cups of coffee, to be able to recoup that $2,100.
Right. They wouldn't do it if that was the cost that they had to incur.
Further discussion? Alderman Weigel.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to make it clear to the council members that the recommendation came out of committee in a three to two vote. It was not a unanimous recommendation. Also, the reason that we're trying to find an answer tonight is that we have, one of the businesses in downtown Missousetts is interested in getting a pedlet in this season yet and is trying to decide on whether she should incur the construction costs, which would be substantial. Yeah, her indication is that this would be the tipping point of whether she would do it or not. Yes, it's kind of, it's short notice, yeah. You know, people tend to bring these things to us at the last minute. The question is for us, right now, I mean, we're going to be killing pedlets if we keep this at the $5 million requirement. I guess there may be other ways to look at this. We might be able to say that if you have a big pedlet, it should be $5 million, and if you have a smaller one, that it might be $2 million. That might be one way to look at it. We also made a suggestion that perhaps because these are congregating in the downtown, that the bid might be able to offer them some sort of quantity discount if they buy their insurance together. Of course, that's not an answer we'd have here tonight. Part of it is we don't meet for another month, you know, so I think this one business in the downtown is going to probably be going home tonight and sending an email to their contractor to stop all the work on her pedlet. That doesn't mean we can't revisit it and maybe find another answer sometime in the future, but I was in support of the lower limit, at least, you know, for now, and I guess forever. That's my thoughts on it. If we want to see these happen, this is what it's going to have to be.
Mayor Devine.
And just too, and I think what the other members of the committee felt is that this was thrown at us tonight. We had to make a decision tonight without any further input, any further information. And my opinion was that I'm going to go with staff's recommendation before I do something that I'm going to regret a year, two, five years down the road. I don't know. So that was how it came out of committee, and I think that's the way the other members of the committee felt. So again, more discussion.
Alderman Haas, and then Lysick.
Thank you. Yeah, a question for city attorney Post in regard to the municipal caps on liability. Scott, tell us about the caps on municipal liability. Are we protected by them? What are, to what extent are we protected? And really what I'm trying to get at with our discussion is could we go with the lower $2 million amount, keeping in mind the municipal caps on liability?
The municipal caps on liability for an automobile are $250,000 where an automobile is involved. So if the driver has a $50,000 policy and the driver, you know, runs into one of these pedlets and hits, let's say, three or four people, that policy will disappear quickly. Then they'll look for, okay, whose pedlet was this? Whose property, why, okay, there are these tables, that's what, for example. They then sue them. If they have the $1 million, $2 million, the $1 million, $2 million doesn't mean there's $1 million for an individual and $2 million if there's more than one individual. It's $1 million coverage per occurrence, which would be the car crashing in, and $2 million aggregate, meaning over the course of the policy, multiple occurrences. So there would really only be $1 million in coverage for that occurrence, no matter how many people got injured. So that potential at $250,000, which is only our liability, they have unlimited liability, of course. That could eat up all that insurance. Then the next thing the plaintiff's lawyer looks to is who granted this thing where the pedestrians were out in the roadway on this wooden thing? And then there's also the issue of what kind of barricades are there to protect these pedestrians? If there are no barricades or just wooden barricades, easy to hit the pedestrians. If you put in big concrete-type barriers, planters-type things, as Mike Lewis had told me, and I hadn't thought about this at all, that's contrary to everything that they've done professionally as traffic engineers to try and eliminate something that you can plow your car into and have you come to a grinding halt. So depending on how we go with these things, that could be another potential injury to the person in the car. Then you would have, however many people get injured, get to make their claims, and so that can all eat up insurance. And certainly people walking on a busy sidewalk, you could have, you know, a handful of people that get injured by this. Of each $250,000 claim, the city has $150,000 liability. Everything above that CivMCC pays for, up to, I believe it's $5 million, then we have $3 million top for a total of $8 million that we pay. And so can we pay that for, let's say, five people get injured in the accident? Yes, we could conceivably pay a $250, or the $150 on each one. CivMCC gets the rest of that, and those caps are there. But it's also then derivative claims are separate. So loss of society and companionship for a spouse or a small child, minor child, each of those get added on. So there's potential for more than just the five people who got injured to submit claims. If mom got injured and killed or injured and can't take care of the kids now, the kids have a claim for loss of society and companionship. Each of those can be made against the city with the $250,000 cap, where we pay $150 and CivMCC would pay the rest, everything. So the potential is there to go well above a million or $2 million, and that's the reason for the recommendation. And there was a lot of discussion in the committee about getting a CivMCC recommendation. I had proposed that, you know, but I'm fairly confident, based on our past review with CivMCC and knowing what an insurance company, a risk management company is, they're in the risk management business and forcing risk off on somebody else, they're going to want higher limits and policies, of course. You know, but we can certainly ask them, but we already did that a year and a half ago, and that's what they came for, for these things. So that's how we arrived at that number, and that's why I think it's realistic if you have that catastrophic-type accident where we would require those coverages. Now, you also then have to look at what's the likelihood of that? How many times do we have cars careening off the street into the sidewalk on Greenfield Avenue? I'm not aware of any, but if you took that attitude all the time, you would never have insurance. You have insurance to protect against the plausible what-ifs, and when you now put one of these things out into the roadway, particularly like Greenfield Avenue, I think the level of what-if goes up quite a bit. You could have an accident like that. It's not like going past the parked cars up onto the sidewalk injuring somebody. These are now out into the roadway. So that was the reason for the recommendation and the analysis of the risk that we face.
Thank you.
Alderman Lysick?
I'm not sure who calls it whether the mayor says. I usually do. Mayor Devine, I guess I want to make sure that I understand this completely. We've already passed 24, which says that property can put a pedlet in with the $5 million insurance coverage.
That is correct.
Okay. Item 23 is a communication that's saying, okay, that's, I don't, from the director of development, saying that the development department doesn't necessarily agree with that high of a number, and they would recommend a lower maximum insurance, and that's what we're talking about right now. And the committee recommendation is coming out three to two to say we want to leave it at $5 million.
That is correct.
And if I could interrupt just a moment, Mr. Lysick?
That's why I mentioned before, I think 24 ought to be part of this discussion because the way it occurred in committee, they went with the $5 million based on the vote on 23. And so if, you know, if this committee wants to change that, it ought to change 24 as well. That was the point of my first coming up to address. Sorry for the interruption.
And I guess my next question would be, you know, how accurate is this $2,500 cost for the additional insurance? Where did that figure come from? Have we polled the number of insurance agencies, or is this just one person saying, hey, that's what it is?
The people that were in front of the committee tonight, which was the two restaurants that are involved, both claim that they got estimates, and Diane Brandt spoke on behalf of them, and that's where the number came from.
So it's from more than one insurance company?
I believe it was three different companies.
Three? Okay.
And that the $2 million came in at around somewhere between $1,000 and $1,200 for an umbrella. The $5 million came in, if my memory serves me right, somewhere around between $2,000 and $2,500.
My next question would be, you know, what kind of umbrella insurance do they have at the present time? I mean, I would think as a business, they've got business insurance and they have an umbrella coverage, and apparently it's not up to a $5 million figure?
The impression that I got from discussing it with them in committee was that all they had was the $1 million coverage, business coverage, and that was it, with no umbrella currently.
Correct.
That they would have to purchase either the two or the five, depending on what was decided. But, like I said, that was just my impression, based on the discussion. I don't recall them specifically saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman May.
Scott, I know this isn't a cross-examination, but you're the legal advice in the room, so I'm just curious, you know, to a transportation engineer, the roadway is defined as property line to property line. Right now, if a person gets struck on a sidewalk, who is liable? Is anybody liable for?
Typically, the operator of the vehicle and nobody else because, you know, the whole world is used to, between the sidewalks is where you drive, and you go up over that, you're off the roadway. Here, we're putting a little jut out, wooden jut out into the roadway, you know, between the curbs, essentially. And so that's different from what occurs virtually anywhere else that you see. And that's where I think the potential risk is, that we're now having pedestrians go in an area where pedestrians don't belong, you know, in a little structure, as opposed to, you know, if anybody were to make a claim against the city that, well, because they rode up on the sidewalk, that somehow we have liability, well, that's how, that's the standard. A sidewalk is a sidewalk, and, you know, they went up over the curb, and what decision did we make that caused liability? As opposed to if we get sued for a pedlet that's out into, you know, traffic, essentially, then a better argument can be made, I think, that there's a grounds for liability, which we would at least have to defend on, even if we were successful, and arguing that either we're immune or that we have other defenses. And certainly, I'm not saying that we would be liable on these things, let me make that clear. I just think we're much more susceptible to liability. We would still have excellent arguments to make, and I would make them, obviously, that we're not liable, but that doesn't stop plaintiff's lawyers from suing us all the time.
I guess my thought is, you know, we also have parking lanes where people are between vehicles, and they get in and out of cars, and, you know, they're pedestrians technically in those parking lanes, and I would guess that we're not responsible for that either. That, I want to talk about pedlets more than parklets right now. I think parklets is a whole nother beast, but a pedlet, I mean, in a way, it's a sidewalk. If instead of being this deck, we had curb there, we would consider it a sidewalk just as much as we would consider this kind of defined space, but now with a fence around it. I would, and again, I'm not a court of law, but I would consider that to be a sidewalk. So that's just my opinion, I guess, as a transportation professional, but again, I'm not a lawyer. In terms of the $5 million umbrella, you know, our company, well before I was an Alderman, did some work with the city too, and we had kind of thought, you know, the only city that ever asked us for a $5 million umbrella on a project was West Alice, and we'd kind of thought that was a bit extreme, and one of the concerns we had at the time was buying the insurance because, you know, just to validate the comments from Diane Brandt that, you know, it does cost quite a bit extra for this. You know, with this information, what I guess I would say is, if it's a pedlet, you can only get so many people on there walking through at a time. Normal space, the figure's about three feet, you know, walking space per person. Instead of just saying $1 million, $2 million, $5 million, why don't we just say for every 15 feet of space, it's another million you have to pay? You know, and once you get the foot 16 to 30, now you got to pay $2 million umbrella. You get 30, it would seem that, you know, per linear foot of curb would make more sense, to a maximum of $5 million. And I know that's nothing that's been discussed before. I don't know exactly if it's not properly noticed that way, can we make a decision like that today? But wouldn't that seem to make more sense, a million per linear foot of pedlet? I guess is my proposal. Does that make sense?
The, like I said in committee, and I'll say again here, you know, this is a policy decision for you, as Alderman, to make. There are all kinds of contravening interests that are being weighed here, and you've got to make a decision on it, essentially. And, you know, there are good reasons for just about any one of the things that have been proposed here, including, you know, just the $1 million, $2 million that has been discussed. It comes down to how much risk do you want to absorb as a city to get this done? That's what it comes down to, essentially.
Well, I'm looking for, are we looking for a vote?
You can tailor that all kinds of different ways.
Well, here's the, and again, I'm going to bring this up. This was presented to us tonight, and we were told, you got to decide right now. You have no time to decide. And on what I'm getting, and I only have staff's recommendation, and that's why I voted with staff's recommendation. If I had more time, and we could discuss these things, and we could get more in detail about it, I might be inclined to change my mind. But being forced to make a decision right now, tonight, I'm going to go with, personally, with staff's recommendation of the $5 million, without having any other information in front of me besides our discussion.
So are we looking just for consensus, or are we looking for an actual motion? Are we looking for, I mean, I personally feel a million coverage for every 15 feet, you get the foot 16 to 30, and I, you know, your exposure goes up as more people can be on these things. It makes sense that, you know, the larger the pedlet, the more exposure you have. You know, just to say $5 million for everybody seems a bit exorbitant, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I don't know if we need to, if I should make that as a motion, or just nod of heads or something like that's reasonable, or what are we looking for?
This is the confusion that I had, discussion with the city attorney to begin with, because there's really nothing in front of us. It's strictly a recommendation.
It was a direction to staff to create a policy under the $5 million level, and it passed in committee three to two.
Three to two.
Alderman Probst.
I have a question of attorney Scott Post, if I might. Scott, when I was reading John's email, just help me understand something because I don't necessarily get this, and I know we don't compare ourselves off into the city of Milwaukee and should not, but the city of Milwaukee says here that they've chosen to promote parklets under their existing grant of privilege requirement? What is a grant of privilege requirement?
For Milwaukee?
Yes.
I don't know what their requirements are.
Not specifically, I mean, what does that mean as opposed to, and do we have that here?
Yeah, you know, granted privileges, anytime anybody has anything that is into or projects over the city right away, you need a grant of privilege.
They're only requiring a $10,000 general liability requirement. Have you, have you had any discussions with any of the city attorneys from Milwaukee as to, I mean, is there any, I recognize we don't hold ourselves to their rules, and nor, again, should we, but is there any continuity or discussions amongst city attorneys and directions for how to do these types of things?
Sure, all the time. Milwaukee and West Alice City Attorney's Office have dealings with each other all the time.
Okay.
And we discuss this. And one of them that we've particularly discussed is insurance, insurance coverage and risk management. I gave a talk on this topic at last year's Municipal Attorneys Institute and, you know, presented what we did and how we did it and why, and then met with the Milwaukee City Attorney's Office several weeks later and went over their policies and procedures and what they had. And, you know, they liked a lot of what we did, we're going to make changes. There were some of the things they didn't like and didn't think they were necessary, and it's all just a question of, you know, each individual municipality has to evaluate risk and what they do, and of course, they've got different procedures. With Milwaukee and their grant of privilege, you know, the statute allows for a bond in the amount of $10,000. It also allows for insurance. They chose not to do that. But I'm not aware of any of these things in the city of Milwaukee that is out into a major arterial street like Greenfield Avenue.
Okay.
If you look at the pictures that were provided as part of the policy, they have a picture of one in Milwaukee that is off on a very small side street that doesn't have traffic, and if it does, it's at 25 miles an hour, so the risk is much less than it would be on a major arterial.
Okay.
But yeah, in answer to your question, we do discuss this in general among municipal attorneys, and I have specifically with the city of Milwaukee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Devine. Alderman Weigel.
On the comparison to what Milwaukee's done, Scott Post is right. Milwaukee, Milwaukee's existing ones, the ones that were brought to us, are on side streets, but again, that's, those are parklets, okay? Those are service areas with tables where customers sit. We're not talking about that here. We're talking, what we're talking about are pedlets, which are essentially an extension of our sidewalk out into the public right away, just as we, I think, I'm not sure, but I think a crosswalk is in some ways an extension of the sidewalk into the street, I believe. You know, pedestrians have certain rights. When you paint those two white lines on the street at a crosswalk, pedestrians are granted certain rights just by those two striped lines. I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we're talking about pedlets in West Alice, not places where people sit down and eat and drink.
Any other discussion? Alderman Chaplaski.
You know, like I said in committee, if you're Walgreens or Starbucks, the $5 million's no problem. You can put up the money. But when you're a small business and you look at, you know, you break it down to the lowest common denominator, you know, how many cups of coffee you have to sell just to pay the insurance, no one's going to do it. And then if, so if you don't have a large enough property in front of your business, which no one in downtown Greenfield has, I'm sorry, downtown West Alice has, you just can't have it, and you won't do it, and people will go elsewhere. It's kind of like a penalty to small business. I mean, a lot of different things can happen. What have we eliminated? Parking and extended the sidewalks? Then it's fine? Parking and extended the sidewalks? Then it's fine. There's a lot of what ifs here, but I think that that we need to, we need the small business to vitalize our community. My understanding is that Coffee Works is thinking about having one too. That whole intersection has changed with with Coffee Works. People remember how it used to look before they they went ahead and, well, it's a church too, it did all the remodeling over there, and it's changed, and and people coming through our city, which there's a lot of them there, you know, can see a distinct difference in how much better we look, and having something like that over there would once again be an improvement. Not to mention that anyone living in the area will be able to walk down on a nice morning and have a cup of coffee outside. I I just think it's a penalty against small business. I think we need to reconsider it. Yes, it came short. I wish this would have came up in the spring rather than now, because obviously, it's only good for three, four months. But I would say we need to reconsider, and we need to look at all other options so we can get this done.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick.
I'm going to move to amend the communication amount from $1 million to, or $5 million, whatever. The recommendation is 5 million, so I'm going to say, I'm going to move to amend it to $2 million. And if I get a second for that, I'd like to explain why.
Second.
There is a motion and a second by Alderman Probst.
Mayor Devine, I've looked at this, and quite frankly, I have, you know, I had a lot of serious reservations about not doing the $5 million. But the more I think about it, the more I look at at the Greenfield Avenue area, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. There's parking both before and after these parklets or pedlets. So in most instances, there are going to be cars parked right in front of it and right behind it. There's going to be hours during the day when there maybe won't be, but during those hours, there's not a lot of people on Greenfield Avenue utilizing those anyway, so they can be walking down a regular sidewalk. I I don't see our exposure as being all that great. I'd feel more comfortable with 5 million, but but I can certainly live with with the $2 million coverage, and I would hope that, you know, the bid district would look at coming up with a better insurance for the entire area, that maybe we can have our planning department look at better planning. Perhaps what we ought to be doing is putting a concrete furo out there with a tree planted in it or something, better ways of delineating these these pedlets, so that people can can really see that they're there, that they're coming. But on for right now, I think, in order to proceed with these, and to not make them prohibitive for people to put in on Greenfield Avenue, I would encourage us to vote for the amendment.
Thank you. The amendment is before us. Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
So just to clarify things, the the strictly, it's on a recommendation to to recommend the staff to draw up the ordinance or the resolution to require the from $5 million to $2 million as it came out of committee. So a a yes vote will be to for the 2 million, a no vote would be as it was.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no other discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May, and then Alderman Reiki.
Just a quick clarification. This this is for the entire city? That's right? Is that the way this is drawn up? This is not just downtown? So are we are we just trying to approve just the part for for downtown for now and have staff come back? Is that the intent? Yes?
Okay, there has been no clarification on that. We were forced to vote on this, what was put in front of us tonight. My my opinion would be for the entire city, whether you're on Highway 100, or you're on National Avenue, Greenfield, it doesn't matter.
Because, I mean, I'm going to support that, but I think if we need to do it procedurally, maybe we pass that amendment, which I hopefully will pass, and then I'm going to make me make a recommendation. It just covers Greenfield from 70th to 76th for now, and instruct staff to come back with, is that right? Does that sound agreeable?
Make an amendment.
Amendment. Okay. Mayor Devine?
Alderman Reiki first, and then?
Alderman Reiki first, and then Alderman Chapeleski.
Okay. It's unfortunate that we were told that we had to make a decision tonight, and actually, we looked to our staff. We looked to our staff for their wisdom, and there is two conflicting, basically, you might say, stories regarding the staff. I mean, John Stebel has has indicated he felt that the the lower amount would be adequate, and Scott and Mike Lewis indicated basically that they felt the liability would be at risk if we went with the lower amount, and they suggested the higher amount. Some of us on the committee felt that, basically, by voting for the 5 5 million, it would give us a pause to think about this, and and look to the bid for a solution if they could offer it, and also to seek out advice from civic. And we felt that was the way that it would be appropriate way to go versus versus deciding if it should be 2 million, or 5 million, or 1 million, or whatever. This way, we would have the recommendation from an important financial business to suggest the solution. And it would give bid also a time to look to see if possibly they could institute an umbrella that would cover this portion for the businesses. We need that time to think rather than make a rash decision, I think. The risk on Greenfield, to me, is very great. The traffic is horrendous at at certain times of the day. If you've ever been down there, you realize it, there's a lot of traffic, and it moves very swiftly. And I I myself feel that we should, we should, we should make sure that the city is is protected.
Thank you. Alderman Chapeleski.
I first have to say that I realize that Alderman Reiki's on the 5th District, but to come downtown, the traffic does not move swiftly. It's at, it's at, it's at standstill, almost all the time. You can't, you can't even make it through without hitting two lights. But, you know, I don't, I, nowhere in our discussion in committee did we bring it up that it was exclusively in the downtown, and I don't want to hold it there. We already got interest from Coffee Works, you know, in the six points. So I don't want to limit it just to the downtown area. I think it should be let off anywhere. Obviously, on Highway 100, no one's going to do it, because they have the wider sidewalks, the the buildings are further back, and but I'm just saying, I don't want to limit it to just the downtown.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman May.
A quick point of clarification. I'm saying, just for now, for the month. In next month, they can come back with a proposal for the for the rest of the city, just to help get the businesses on Greenfield going this month. So I agree with you. I'd like to see it expanded to more, but I think just to get these businesses going.
Well, this does get it going.
Basically, it can be changed at any time, even if we make a decision tonight.
Yes.
All right. So the motion before us is an amendment to change the direction to staff to pursue a $5 million coverage policy to a $2 million coverage policy. Is there any other discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Weigel.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that if we approve the 2 million now, that, and I'm in favor of the 2 million, but businesses will be making investments on the idea, and in their budget, they will have their annual insurance costs in that budget then. And one of the businesses expressed expressed the idea that if if it, if we approve 2 million now and jump up to 5 million next year, that their investment will have been wasted, because they will not be, they would not continue open with that. So it's not an idea that we can, you know, we can certainly lower it any time, but I think if we want to raise it in the future, that that's going to have some substantial negative impacts on on people that are making investments. So I am in favor of the 2 million, but I just want people to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
And Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on that, and that's why I stayed with the $5 million, because we could always reduce it, but we can never go back up. Once that $2 million there, you can go down from the 2 million, but you can never, never go back up. And that was the point that we made in committee. We said, look, this is in front of us tonight. Let's go with the 5 million. We can have discussions down the line. Are they going to be without their, this year, maybe. Next year, they can do it if we decide we get more information and we want to lower it. So, you know, I'm still recommending, I'm going to vote with the committee with the $5 million, because again, we always can reduce it, we can always change it. Once the 2 million's in, the 2 million, 2 million is in, we can't. Can only go down.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
We can raise it later.
Correct.
Okay. It would be, it would be very unfair to the people who make the investment. We can, we can go to 2 million now, and if we're all convinced, we can go to 5 million. We can raise it in the future. We can go up, we can go down whenever we want.
Alderman Chapeleski.
Now, like the City Attorney Scott Post said, now, does that mean on number 24, it'll be amended to 2 million?
We would do that after this.
We'd need a motion to reconsider it. Okay. Okay. On the amendment by Alderman.
It does not include the bid, right?
Me.
Does not include the bid.
Lysick, me.
No, I was listening to the clerk, I'm sorry. I do know who our council president is. On that amendment, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
No.
Roat.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Nope.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Six in favor, three opposed.
Okay, the amendment passes. Now, I believe it is in front of us as amended.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman May.
I'd like to add one additional amendment, that this is strictly for downtown at this point.
Second.
And and have staff come back to us for the rest of the city.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
No.
Roat.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right. We are.
And now on the whole committee.
Now on the on the two amendments, there's, correct, the item as amended.
Has passed as amended, number 24.
Passed as amended. Now, item 23, I believe I do.
24.
No.
23 still needs to pass with the two amendments, correct?
We still have to pass.
23 was strictly a communication. It was placed on file.
Directing staff.
But we didn't pass.
What we did tonight is directed staff.
We just, we voted on two amendments. We did not vote on the communication.
We did not, you're right.
Right.
Second.
We still need to vote.
I move with, just.
All right. So 23, then, all we're looking for is a a motion to place on file.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Devine? It's to, it's to approve the communication as amended and place on file.
Yes. Okay. Should we have a second to that?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second by Alderman Weigel, I believe was first. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Nope.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Eight in favor.
I'm sorry, eight in favor, one opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have item 24.
Item number 24, which was the resolution for the major encroachment to the owner, and I believe it's pronounced Bestridge LLC for property located at 73, 7335 West Greenfield Avenue. What we would look for is someone to.
Mayor Devine, motion to reconsider, second.
Okay, there's a motion to reconsider, and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the item is before us.
Mayor Devine?
President Lysick.
I move to amend that resolution to change the amount from 5 million to 2 million dollars insurance required. Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second by Alderman Probst. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
No.
Roat.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
No.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Six in favor, three opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
That was the amendment.
Is that it?
That was the amendment, wasn't it?
No, that was.
That was the amendment.
Oh, that was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
As amended.
Now the, now the resolution.
Now the resolution.
Move approval of the resolution as amended.
As amended.
The motion by Alderman Weigel, second by Alderman May. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
No.
Roat.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Nope.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Six in favor, three opposed.
Motion carries.
What's that, Mayor Devine? Unprecedented in the history of the country.
Public works marathon.
That is all.
All right. Let's go on to Safety and Development Committee.
Kevin, you were a lot more expedient.
Hopefully, this report will go a lot faster. I refer you to items 29 through 34 on your agenda, various resolutions and communications, all regarding the public hearings we had this evening. Item 29 to be passed, to be adopted as amended, changing the hours from 12 o'clock AM to 10 PM closing, acted upon favorably by all four members of the committee present. I move for adoption of the committee report.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second by Alderman Probst. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine, I would like to request 29 and 30 to be brought out separate, please.
I would then move for the other items.
Items 28 and 31 through 34.
Second.
Not 28, sorry. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Motion carries.
I'm Mayor Devine, and I refer you items 29 and 30, which is the resolution relative to determination of special use for outdoor patio with extension of licensed premise for O'Connor's Perfect Pint at 8423 West Greenfield, to be adopted as amended, and the communication be placed on file.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Probst. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Reiki.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Nope.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. License and Health Committee, Alderman Chapeleski.
I'd like to bring everyone's attention. Item number 35 on tonight's agenda. This is various license application for Benno's without a pedlet or parklet in downtown. It's voted for approval by four members, or one member voting present. I'd like to move for the adoption of this portion of the committee's report. Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman May. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Haas.
Aye.
Lysick. Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrot.
Aye.